And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Burcraft, and audience, and to those who have joined us via Zoom. This is the City of Romulus City Council meeting, and today's date is August 3rd, 2020. At this time, we will have roll call, Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barton is excused. Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here.
And Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Madam Clerk.
This meeting is also being broadcast via the Zoom Meeting App. And for those that are watching or would like to join this meeting tonight, the meeting ID number is 838-3684-281. Again, the meeting ID number is 838-3684-281. If you'd like to participate by phone, you can dial in at 1-646-558-8656. Tonight's meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Number five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, communication. And number twelve, adjournment. And a motion being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to approve the agenda meeting for tonight. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth? Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Two A, for approval, are the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 27th, 2020.
Madam Chairman, I'll move to approve the minutes of July the 22nd, 2020.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Webb, to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on July 27th. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Two B, for approval, are the minutes from the public hearing held on July 27th, 2020.
So moved for approval of the minutes held on July 27th, 2020.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for the approval of the public hearing meetings, meeting minutes held on July 27th. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Madam Chair, if I may, before we continue on, I'd like to announce that the meeting ID number, again, is, there was one digit that was left off. So I'd like to repeat it again for those that would like to join this meeting electronically. The meeting ID number is 838-3684-2813. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
There are no petitioners on the agenda this evening. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I get started, I want to read into this, the Governor's order, just read, do a brief reading over here. Effective July 29th, 2020, Governor Whitmore signed into law Executive Order Number 2020-160 to comply with the Order 783. If it is indoors, the gathering or event does not exceed ten people. The Romulus City Council chambers cannot exceed ten attendees at any time. For the viewing audience and those participating via Zoom, I want to assure you that we are following the order. Only eight elected officials are in the council chamber this evening, as was reflected during roll call by the city clerk. The Romulus Cable Department is filming the meeting live remotely, and with the assistance of our City Hall entrance health screener, only up to two people from the public are permitted in the council chambers at any time. Those wishing to speak under an agenda action item will permit in the council chambers during the agenda item and will exit once action is taken by the city council. Members of the public wishing to speak under public comment will be permitted to do so and will be called into the council chambers in the order in which they submitted their requests to speak under public discussion to the health screener at the City Hall entrance this evening. As we have made available for several months, the public will also have the ability to speak to the city council via Zoom as published by the city clerk. Lastly, in accordance with Governor Whitmore's Executive Order Number 2020-153, effective July 17th, 2020, Item 2K, the requirement to wear face covering does not apply to individuals who are given a speech for broadcast or to an audience, provided that the audience is at least six feet away from the speaker. Therefore, the elected officials are not required to wear face coverings when seated for the city council meeting. It should be noted that not only are elected officials seated socially distanced in excess of six feet from the audience and each other, the city added sneeze guards because between each elected official for added safety of the officials and the public. And I just want to thank the city for all that they've done to keep us safe again. As I said a couple of weeks ago, they've gone above and beyond keeping us safe as we came back into the city council chambers. So thank you, Mayor, and your team for that. And then even just adhering to the new order from the Governor. So we just want to thank you for watching out and keeping us all safe while we're here in the chambers. And then, and that's all I have as far as the Governor's order. I want to keep continuing prayers for Mr. Barton, as he's not here again. We want to keep his family in his prayers, in prayers, as he is still out of town, tending to family business. So let's please keep him in prayers, send him a call, shoot him a text, let him know that, you know, we're thinking of him and you're thinking of him. The other thing I would like to talk about is the census. I got some great news today that we broke the 70% mark in the City of Romulus. Everybody else is still in the 60s teetering. We're above the national, we're above the state, we're above the county levels. We broke 70%. It was at a flat, right below 70% for several weeks. We were just flat, it was just really no movement. But we did break 70% this past week. And then I was just informed by Jasmine Dancy that we have a census material in that we're going to start getting out all over the city to really pump up the need to fill out the census. This is an opportunity now to get the funding we need for not only our city, but across the state of Michigan. We need this funding. We'll not see this opportunity again for another 10 years if we do not get on top of this right now. So please spread the word, not just to people, I mean, people, if you've done it, awesome, great job, but spread it to people who have not, in other cities, counties. We got to get this across the state of Michigan so that we can get the funding we need for our state, our cities, and our counties. So thank you for that, and Jasmine, thank you for that information. I also want to just put out there, we've had a couple of ologists in the last several weeks. I had a resident contact me and ask if I could make an announcement in the case when we have ologists, if we can all just plummet DTE with phone calls to let them know, to be responsive to the ologists. I know we've had a couple of, in the last couple of weeks, some major storms, and they just asked me to please, when we have these, if we have, when we have these ologists, we pray don't have them too often, to please plummet, bombard DTE with calls so that the problems are resolved quickly, as quickly as possible. And outside of that, I think everybody up here received the ordinance that we requested at the last city council meeting. It should be all at our desk, so we have that in hand. And outside of that, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to accept the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo? Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Clerk, audience, and our listening audience at home. This week, I just wanted to wish a happy birthday to Councilwoman Williams and Webb, who both share one on the 5th, so enjoy your birthday.
All right.
And then we wanted to make you aware that also, we do have some team members that have called in the Zoom calls, so as our chairperson mentioned, to accommodate the Governor's orders. So throughout the meeting, if you do have questions, Chief of Staff, Jasmine, Attorney, and others, so if there are questions we need to throw at them, just because we couldn't have them physically in the room, they are on the call. And with that, actually, there's a short report that I wanted to have Jasmine Dancy give, if she's on the call, to both kind of give a quick update. And then since really the action item that I'm bringing to you tonight under Item A is one that she's been working on quite a while, and we're pleased to present to you here tonight, I'll let her do just a brief intro, and then I'll get on and ask for the action for that item. So at this point, if you're there, Jasmine, I'll turn it over to you. Is she there, Ellen? Well, you always have a Plan B, so what I'll do is I'll leave the room, ask her to come in, so we stay within the number, because she was calling in from over there. So if you'll give me one second, I'll be, have her right back here.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I guess I was having, I was being heard on Zoom, but not in here, so I apologize for that. Again, thank you, guys. My name's Jasmine Dancy, here for Director of Marketing and Community Development, and I did just have a short piece of good news to share before getting into the mayor's action item. And that was just to kind of share about our first community movie-in-the-park drive-in style that we had this past Friday. We held it at a different location, and we do want to send our appreciation to Romulus Community School Board for approving our request to use their field, which was back behind the senior center on the open lot between, on, out of between Grant and Bibbins. And we just had a really nice turnout. We showed the movie Sonic, played some games ahead of time, passed out prizes. And everyone's cars were plenty, you know, probably 16 feet at least apart each. They had plenty of space for each family unit to have, either stay within their cars or have their chairs out in front. And it was just a really, really nice time for everybody. So we're looking forward to doing that again on the last Friday in August and the last Friday in September, with those movies to be determined at this point. But we'll definitely keep you updated as that moves forward. So I just wanted to give a thank you also to my team, Mike and Tanya and Roger and Maria, that helps get that set up, and it was a great evening for everybody. So that was a little bit of separate news prior to the mayor's action item. So, let's see. So I'm so happy to have Steve and Wendy Harmon here with us tonight. We've been working with them since last September was the first time you guys had walked through and seen the Firehouse building. And Steve and Wendy are not only Romulus residents, but they're well-established business owners, and they've shown great initiative and patience, and I want to thank them for that as well, in bearing with us through this process of getting the building ready and the lease ready to be signed, which is before you counsel tonight. So I've included a little bit of information in your packet about each of them, and they're separate businesses. But again, they are husband and wife and Romulus residents. So kind of bringing the family all under one roof, hopefully very soon. And we're looking forward to having this lease approved tonight so that they can move forward with their plans. As you did see in the lease, there is a couple of last improvements to the building that the city, as it is our building, it's our responsibility to get those last improvements made so that they can also be making their improvements simultaneously. So we don't foresee that having any issues in holding up their business process either. So Steve and Wendy are here tonight as well, if you have any questions for them. But otherwise, we're looking forward to your approval and really thank you for your consideration.
Madam Chair.
Thanks, Jasmine. Mr. Wadsworth?
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Number one, I have to, I've got a compliment meant to you both, that you want to move in the same building and be together every hour of every day. But, and this is a good, positive thing for residents and for the building. But, you know, Jasmine, the question I have is the amount of $400,000 to do the improvements outside? And that's not coming from the residents' property taxes, correct?
No, that was actually done a couple of-
Explain that, please.
Yeah, sure. The $400 approximately was actually a grant that we received from Wayne County CDBG funds, leftover funds that other communities had not utilized. We gave them a proposal, they approved it. And so that was all county CDBG funds, nothing from the City General Fund.
Okay, and one more question for Steve. Is this going to be just repairs or sales and service? This is my question.
Mainly it'll be, I build custom motorcycles.
Yeah, I've seen the pictures, they're beautiful.
I build custom motorcycles, so it'll be mainly custom work, but I do accident repair. You know, I don't do anything like mechanical. I do basic maintenance, so it won't be engine work or anything like that. It's just basically building custom bikes and everything.
Okay, fine, thank you. It's a good project.
Ms. Williams?
I would just like to add to what Jasmine said. You're good. That $400,000, the former council supported that, and that's when the other restaurant, the barbecue restaurant, was going to come. So definitely it's not tax carries money. It's, well, it's tax carries money, but through the county, through grants. So I think it's a wonderful thing to bring a business, and especially a resident-owned business, to the city. It's a lot of motorcycle riders. We got one, Bob McCray. And this guy does some awesome work. He done some work for my daughter. I was so glad she sold it. But he does some awesome work, some one-of-a-kind motorcycles, and just all kinds of things. And he's a great guy. I wouldn't say it if it wasn't true, and so welcome to our city.
All right. Anybody else have questions? I got a couple of questions. So when are y'all going to get started? I know there's still some work to be done, but when do you anticipate the motorcycle piece opening? You thinking?
I'm just waiting. I'm waiting soon as the new doors get put in. The only thing that's holding me up is I don't have access to the building.
I got you, okay.
The way the building is now, I mean, I can literally, that electrical is in, the lights are in. Once I get in, I'm going to, you know, paint outside, exterior and interior of the building. And that's, that's it. Everything that I need, I have already.
Okay.
Biggest issue.
Right.
Space.
Got you. No, thank you. I'm sorry.
Is there going to be an outside lit sign advertising the building?
In the front, I mean, either, whatever, you know, you guys approve, put a sign out in the window, or put an awning. Something like what, across the street, people got on his building.
Sounds good.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, and I would be wrong to leave the wife out. So as soon as you open, I definitely will give you my number, because I need my hair done.
Yeah, so like I said, you know, we, we're together all, you know, we've been together for years. I met my wife Wendy when she was 19, and it's our first day, you know, so it's. Yeah, like I said, it's, it's more convenient for us. Rode by, I was, I don't even, I was riding by on my motorcycle, and I seen the sign up for the building, and I just kind of passed it up. And then I came back a couple of days later and started making a couple of phone calls. Jasmine had told her what I wanted to do, and we've been moving forward ever since.
Awesome.
You know, so I'm just, I'm anxious to do it. I have, I have so much work. I mean, I have, well, I have a waiting list probably for now.
Oh, wow.
Because I, you know, my space is limited. And then, you know, people to help me out, you know, it's, I have the limit.
That's awesome. Ms. Abdo?
That's great.
I was hoping for the listening audience that you could explain what else is your planning for the building. I know that you were doing custom repairs on motorcycles, but there's more planned if your wife Wendy could come up and- Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wendy. The other piece would be a coffee salon, which would be on the other half. And if you, I don't know if you guys have been inside of the building, but it is a concrete wall that would separate the motorcycle portion from everything else. So once we found out about the building, I started doing a little bit more research, because I've owned a hair salon in Belleville for, probably since 2011. I had two locations in Belleville. So I couldn't really find, I knew what I wanted, but I couldn't really figure out how to put it together. So just after doing some research, after we found the building, I went down to North Carolina. There was a salon café that had identical to what I wanted. So I went down there for a week, and I witnessed their operations, asked the manager and owner's questions as to how I can make that happen in Romulus. So that was very, it was very worth it, because it was like, how, I got to really see how to blend it together. So the way they had it separated, which if you guys had a chance to review the architectural plans, it's like, it's two things, but kind of like one, but because it is coffee and hair, we have like some type of partition or separate, permanent partition or separation that'll divide the two. But if a customer wanted to go head over and get some coffee while waiting to get their hair done, they could. But it wouldn't be like a back-and-forth access, they would be two different things. So then I thought the coffee shop was important, because one, I'm like, I love coffee, like I can't live without it. And then when I went, and then in addition to that, I went to Portland, which is like one of the main places to learn about coffee. And it was America's Coffee, it's a coffee training company. And I went there for, I think it was 10 days, and took their coffee training to learn how to run a coffee house. And, because I was just a coffee drinker and lover, and it was like, since my daughter's 26, so for the last 20 years, it's been one of my dreams, saw a coffee shop. So I kind of went and figured out how to do that, and the thing about coffee is it's communal. And Romulus is a community-based, and I want the coffee shop and the salon, and also the bikes. We named the coffee shop portion Herman Grounds, because it's kind of like grounds for coffee and grounds where we as a family work together. And I want it to be people's third place. You know, you want to be at home, you want to be at a place of worship, you want to be comfortable. So I want the coffee shop to be that place that people just want to come to. And now we got a little bit of rethinking with post-COVID, because of course COVID wasn't initiated in there. But I'm confident that I can make the necessary pivots that'll make it work.
Great. Thank you, thank you. Anybody, any other discussion?
I will, through the chair, for me, to my colleague, Mrs. Williams. You're going to have to take a number, because I met them coming up the sidewalk. So she's already said that she would do, tell me exactly what she would do with this poof. So I'd like to say thank you so much. I love coffee. If my children happen to come to my home real early, get me out of bed, ring my doorbell, they have coffee in their hand, because they can't talk to me. Nobody can talk about, you know, my coffee. Secondly, I love motorcycles. So that's going to be very, very important. And if no one else has any discussion other than-
I just have one comment.
Okay.
Through the chair. I'd just like to say thank you for taking an interest in the building and for doing your homework. You know, we asked questions and you had answers.
Yes.
And that's really, really great, and that's good for us to know exactly, you know, where you're coming from and like all the research you've done and how you're going to make it work. And I appreciate that. And again, thank you and welcome.
Chair, if it's finished, I'd like to make the motion to concur with administration and grant authorization for the mayor, the clerk, to enter into the attached commercial lease agreement with Big Steve Designs LLC for the lease of 35255 Goddard Road, Romulus, Michigan, 48174.
Support. Ms. Williams? It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Williams, for the, to concur with administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached commercial lease agreement with Big Steve Design LLC for the lease of 35255 Goddard Road, Romulus, Michigan, 48174. Any more discussion? Hearing, Ms. Webb? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Congratulations.
I'll be looking forward to my cup of coffee.
Have a good one.
Thanks for working with us on that with the, thanks for making a motion to get it happening. As you can see, we're excited. It's been a long, long haul. The big success was getting, and I can't do it without Wayne County's help, with that CDBG. That fell under economic development, not our normal CDB dollar. So with that, unless there's any other questions for me, that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Number six is the clerk's report. 6A, for second reading and final adoption, is Budget Amendment 20/21-1. This budget amendment was introduced at the July 27th, 2020 council meeting.
Madam Chairman, I'll move for the second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-
Support.
That you've still have?
Yes.
Okay. It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for the second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-1. Any discussion? Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb? Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
6B, for second reading and final adoption, is Budget Amendment 20/21-2. And this budget amendment was introduced at the council meeting of July 27th, 2020.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion for second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-2.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported, I mean, Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment 20/21-2. Any discussion? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth? Chair votes yes, motion approved.
And the last item under the clerk's report is a study session request from Stacy Page, the City Treasurer, for Monday, August 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. And this is for the purpose of reviewing a presentation given by Mr. Rich Pele, Police, with Envoice Cloud Services.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion. We schedule a study session for Monday, August 10th, at 6:00 PM for Stacy Page, our treasurer.
Support.
Who's that? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Miss, motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, for the study session request from Stacy Page, our City Treasurer, for Monday, August 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Any discussion? Hearing, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Chair, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you. That concludes the action items under the clerk's report. But before I close out, just like to remind everybody, tomorrow, Election Day, the primary election. Just a few things, I just want to let everybody know that the polls will be open. We've had a few calls and people, residents concerned and wondering if the polling locations will be open. And yes, all polling locations will be open. All, we have 12 precincts within seven polling locations. Polls open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. We want every, there's just a few things. We want to disalert residents who vote at Barth Elementary School. That's Precinct 11. There's construction in the back there, and where you would normally enter through the back, the precinct, in the gym, you will not have access there. You'll have to enter through the front doors of the school building. So again, Precinct 11, located at Barth- So, again, precinct eleven located at Barth Elementary School, you'll be entering through the front doors of the school building. Um, Hell Creek School, you'll, uh, be entering through the side, through the back, uh, of the gym, right through the playground area. That hasn't changed. Um, Wick El, I'm sorry, Wick Road, the middle school, uh, those are precincts one, seven, and ten. So, as we all know, that there's a lot of major construction on Wick Road. So, there, um, the detour or the route that we're, uh, that has been recommended for residents, um, it's down, it's going through Ozga to access the middle school. So, there's a couple of ways you can get there. Um, I, I think probably the easiest way is if you're going, uh, south down Wayne Road to Goddard. Take Goddard to Shook, Shook all the way up to McBride, turn left on McBride, and then McBride to Ozga, turn left. And that'll take you, um, straight, uh, into, uh, the, um, the access, right into the middle school. I took the route today, so everything is fine. You can always take Tobine if you want to make, uh, coming, make the right, uh, go, uh, I'm sorry, west on Wick Road. And if you want to go down Tobine and kind of hit the curve, you know, to access Shook Road, you can do, you know, um, take that route as well. Um, but again, we want to assure everyone that we will be, um, complying, um, with social distancing. Um, and the, our election inspectors have been trained, we've gone through a lot of training and they will be wearing masks and you will see face shields or some, sorry, sneeze guards and gloves and all types of things there, um, at the precinct. So, um, we're, we've done our best to make sure, to ensure that all the election inspectors are safe as well as our community, uh, working together so that everyone feels comfortable so that they can cast their vote, um, on tomorrow. Um, finally, uh, or lastly, uh, AVs, uh, we are a little over fifty-eight percent of return. It probably might be more after today, but as of last night, we were at fifty-eight percent return. Um, if you still have your ballot, we ask that you please, uh, drop the, use the, utilize the drop box in front of City Hall. You have until eight o'clock. Do not take your ballots to the precincts to drop off your absentee ballots because they will not be accepted. And, uh, you're going to be asked to deliver your ballot here at City Hall. So, we will be open, obviously, until eight o'clock. So, again, we want to thank everyone for your support. Mayor Burcroft, thank you, um, the administration, uh, I can't say enough about our Department of Public Works. I think I've worn them out.
Um, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
If I can, if I can ask, what about the Oakbrook suburb, they still want to vote at the rack?
Yes, yes, all of the polling locations.
Because I mean, the rack's been closed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilman, uh, Wadsworth, yes, the rack will be open, that's precinct twelve. So, um, uh, in fact, today, we were there setting up the precinct and worked, would like to thank Andy working with them. Um, and also the senior center, uh, that precinct five, uh, the precinct will be open, the polling locations. So, again, all seven of our locations will be open. Want to thank the schools for working with us, uh, uh, Westbrook Estates, the old, uh, Red Gate. Uh, everybody's been great, everybody's been great. It's been a task because with the whole COVID, um, and we've all, you know, worked really hard, um, so that we are, uh, still maintaining democracy so that everyone can exercise their right to vote, but in a safe manner. So, again, thank you and to, uh, my team in the clerk's office, we are exhausted. But, you know, they're a great group of people and, uh, uh, the, I call it the, the fabulous five, the women down there, we work really hard. So, again, thank you to everyone for your support.
Ms. Williams and Ms. Abdo.
Yes, I just would like to know, um, you, you gave the directions from, uh, Tobine to Shook and Ozga to McBride to Ozga. What about Cogswell, you can't use Cogswell to come up with?
I don't, no, you can't. And the only reason I know that for sure because I inadvertently did it today and not paying attention and went down Cogswell.
If I could to clarify, I think, didn't, didn't the, uh, all the precinct vote, voters get a, a letter sent to them on that? Kind of giving them the route to take because with all the traffic and confusion, we didn't want people, if they normally take a route. So, that was spelled out in, uh, a letter that went out to them.
So, you're, you're only able to head east on Wick or west?
West.
West, okay.
But the road is pretty, pretty bumpy.
I seen it.
Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to take your car.
So, they can still, if they want to go west on Wick, it, it, once they cross the tracks, you know, of course, it's one-way west only, they will have, uh, it's rough. I'm telling you, I lived there, it's really rough, but they will still have access. But the route that was preferred, that was sent out is the route that our clerk mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen, if they don't, let's say they are trying to get to the poll and decide, hey, I don't want to do this, can they come to City Hall and get an absentee ballot?
No.
No?
Today was the last day at four o'clock that we could issue absentee ballots.
The absentee ballots, okay, so they're going to have to drive.
Right, only indivi-, uh, individuals who are registering for the first time, um, then they would be eligible for an absentee ballot. But they would have to come to the clerk's office, um, provide the proper documentations, you know, uh, to register. And then they would have the option of voting an absentee ballot or, um, going to the polls to vote.
My next question goes to the mayor. Are we going to have this, do they anticipate having this construction a little further along before the November election?
Uh, yeah, the plan is to be further away from the, the, both the middle school and Wick School. Um, they, they redirected their, uh, construction, most of it back to Cogswell. And as you can tell, they're doing a lot of de-watering through that area. So, what they're telling us is that, uh, we should be fine. Um, we're, we're having, you know, basically weekly calls with them and, and our team as well as OHM are out there. But, um, they're, they're saying they should be well beyond that.
That'd be great, thank you.
And if there are no more questions concerning elections, uh, that concludes the clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Uh, number seven is the treasurer's report and I believe she has joined us via Zoom. And I'm going to take the mic and hold it here. And, uh, Madam Treasurer, um, if you're online, you may speak.
Goodbye, Leroy.
For some reason, we can't pick up the audio.
Okay.
I think she's trying to talk, but we're unable to, uh, nothing's coming through.
Is our treasurer on campus?
At that so.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
I was wondering if she's here, if one of us could step in.
I have not seen her, I, I do not know. I can try to contact her.
Perhaps we can see if she is and we can come back.
Okay.
We can, if that's, we can move on and come back if she's here. Um, then I will just announce, uh, Madam Treasurer, if you are in the building here on campus and would like to address, uh, city council, uh, just let us know and then we'll come back and you can, um, uh, have remarks. All right, um, number eight is public comment and this is the portion of our agenda that is set aside for, um, our citizens that are in the audience and, and also for those, uh, residents who have, uh, joined the meeting, uh, via Zoom. And, uh, you have three minutes to speak. Any additional time, uh, will be upon consent of the chairperson. Again, if you have joined this meeting electronically, um, you will be acknowledged, we'll be using the raise hand, uh, method. And, uh, if you've called, then you want to press, um, star nine, um, and then using your Zoom meeting app, just use the raise hand method. Madam Chair, we do have two written requests to speak and I also have a request to speak electronically.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you want to try the, uh, we can, you, the, the, the two that, that are here until we kind of work out our audio issues.
Sounds good, yeah, let's go with those.
Um, the first request I have is from Crystal Price.
Okay.
Good evening, city council, mayor. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. Um, I want to proudly say, you talk about, uh, Ellen, I heard you talk about the elections are tomorrow and I'm excited because I, tomorrow will be the first time I, that I'll be voting here in the United States and I'm very excited about doing it. Um, but one of the things that I just, I came to city council today because I wanted to know as a resident, um, something that I ran across, um, trying to check out everyone and who is who and whatnot, that's what you're supposed to do, is to check all the candidates. And I just want to know, um, as a resident, how can you run for a judge when you owe back property taxes? How can you fairly judge others when you're not in compliance yourself? And what I found out as I was checking through all, everyone and checking out all the candidates, one of the can, one of the candidates running for a judge, um, Alexandria Taylor owes thousands of dollars in back taxes, yet she's running for judge to judge others. I don't understand this and I wanted to find out or ask you to, um, how does this work? You know, signs don't vote, people do, so how does this work? Can someone explain that to me?
Madam Chairman, I would suggest that be a great question for the state court administrator's office. They're the ones that set the rules and guidelines for that, that wouldn't be city council or city government.
Yeah, I have no clue, yeah, you might want to, um, direct it to the state, uh, you say the state?
State court administrator's office, um, their number is three-one-three-nine-seven-two-thirty-three-hundred. Uh, they're, uh, the branch of the state supreme court and they're the ones that govern all the judges in the district court system.
Okay, so, did you get that in front, that number?
No, I, I don't have a pen.
Oh, okay, well, we'll write, we'll write it down for you.
We can provide it to you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, they're going to answer the question, like, wha- what, you know, what as a resident?
That's their authority, so I would hope they would, yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, yeah, I don't know if anybody up here knows, um, yeah, they probably give you the best answer.
Wouldn't that be something that would be the integrity, like, wouldn't that be something that should have been done before people are candidates? Like, shouldn't that stuff be checked out or is this how this works? I'm, that's what I'm asking, I don't understand, I don't understand how this is working.
Right.
But I do want answers.
Gotcha, yeah, I'm not sure how that's vetted, um.
I'm not sure where she got the information on that, so I would be careful on that, so.
The information, I went online and I checked out different avenues and I went into the properties and her properties she owes. So, I don't understand how you can be a judge, run for a judge, and you're not in compliance yourself. I don't understand that and I would like, I would like the answers to that.
So, the answer, yeah, the state court administrator would be the one to get the answers to that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the number. Yeah.
And I'm not aware of any judge candidates that are behind any taxes, so that would be a question for them.
Yeah, so we'll get you the number, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
The next written request is coming from the Shouds and I'm hoping I pronounced your name correctly.
It's so, it's pronounced like shallow, like. We tried to play that in our voice. First of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address, um. My husband and I live on the way from, and one of the things that he wanted to bring up, you know, that because of, of the craziness, only one of us was allowed in here and I feel he thought he had worked with me, I don't know why, um. The trucks, one, up and down our road and we're in close proximity to the elementary schools. They barrel up and down the streets. Um, he drives a gravel truck for a living, so he kind of can. Age and somebody like me would be like, wow, that one guy is, but he actually can tell how fast they're going. Um, and also I know one day, I actually left my house and it was one-way, so I went one-way. And when I got down to the detour, they had a pile of rock and I could not get through. And now I had to turn around and backtrack and now I'm on the wrong way down the one-way. So, I don't know, and I guess somebody actually came out and apologized to Frank for how poorly the guys were doing the job. I guess he said that they had sent out a green crew, an entire green crew. So, I don't know if you're a citizen, I know you said you were in constant contact with them, so you might kind of want to bring it on this one. Not to mention the fact that they busted our mailbox the day after we put it out. They had a significant year right there. The reason I wanted to come and speak to the council tonight is because back in, I'm not saying January or February, I actually went to the Shelby Station right across the street from the high school. And while I was digging through my purse with some change so I could go in and buy a soda, well, witnessed a drug deal. Right there in front of me in Broaddale. Kind of sat in my car and waited until they left, went in, got my soda, came to get it out. As I'm on my way out, I run into a Romulus officer and I walked up to him and said, wow, if only you had been here two minutes earlier, you could have seen what I just saw and I told him what I saw. And he said, and I quote, yeah, then he had some time. And I just looked at him and I said, this is my town now, I don't like that. And their response is just awful. I called the police commissioner, who unfortunately, I guess, um, medical leave, was told by secretary, I'll bring it to the interim's attention, I'll have him get back with you. And they'd say what they're going to do about this because when I described the young man, she knew exactly who I was talking about. Nobody ever got back with me. I followed him a month and a half later. Oh, yeah, okay, well, I'll have him call you. Nobody ever followed up with me. I don't know how you guys feel about drugs in Romulus. I don't like it, I'm not happy with it, it's bad enough. We're getting pot shops in Royal Oak, but for people to sit there and deal what I can only assume is heroin right in front of me in the middle of the day, across from a high school, to me is not acceptable. And I said, I just wanted to make the council aware of what I saw, of how it was handled or not, and how it was followed up on. Or not, okay.
Um, thank you, Michelle.
I'd like to comment on a couple of those first, uh, you know, because these folks, they're my neighbors, they live across the street. So, I never heard anything about the, the police, uh, I mean, I, we, we did have, uh, um, Chief of Police who was out on medical. I do have an interim, I'd like to have him put in touch with you because that, that's not acceptable. I mean, uh, we have a lot of great officers, they're doing a lot of good, I don't know what, if you happen to have identification that handled that one, we'd like to address that for sure. Uh, I can speak also to the, uh, the Wick Road. This is, and council knows, this is, it's a Great Lakes Water Authority project. So, they are, they are the ones that are funding it and, and proceeding and hiring the contractors and spending the money. But they work through our, um, DPW and Roberto Scappaticci has been working with them throughout this whole process. Uh, they, it's their job to keep their contractor, uh, doing the right things and, and we have addressed, I am aware of some of the speeding and issues. We had PD patrolling that area, we just redirected them, we had the trailer for a while. We basically were, you know, threatened, I'm telling them, we're going to be writing them up if they continue that. Uh, they're now moving some of their construction, uh, over, back over to Cogswell because of the watering issue. You know, the wells like they have in front of, uh, your house and mine. So, uh, but still, that, that just redirects them to that area, so we're actually patrolling that. Uh, but we have had some, uh, you know, some other complaints, uh, we've had some complaints about speeding trucks and dust and others. The dust is more than taken care of, now it's mud, uh, right now. But, uh, the speeding, we're, we'll definitely enforce it. There was a car there, I think it was Friday, that was an unmarked car right on Wick on the north side, uh, just, uh, the other side of the tracks that was patrolling. Um, if you can help us with it, if there's certain times, uh, you know, the, the best way to get enforcement on anything is when our residents help us. So, if there's something going on, uh, we'll jump on it, uh, they can't be everywhere, wherever every speeder's going on. But we put them on notice that if they're going to continue to do it, then those drivers are going to get tickets. And, uh, we were nice about it, we, we, we had the contractor contact, the subcontractor who was doing the actual hauling. So, please help us with that one, uh, that, that's near and dear because, you know, again, I'm right there as well too, so.
And you know those three big, I said I wasn't going to call you out.
That's okay.
Three big birch trees right in my yard.
Yep.
It's almost like they, they said, okay, bring the pipe back, bring the pipe back, yep, we got it on their branch. Pinned branches from those big huge birch trees that are not going to recover once they look at those pictures.
Yeah, I didn't realize either the birches, so anything that they damaged?
I had to go to the Ron, or to the Taylor Post Office to pick up my mail because I didn't know that I, that the, that they were supposed to move my mailbox across the street. So, they didn't. I'm having to mail finally, I went down to the Taylor Post Office, got my mail, it's a couple weeks so far.
I'm having to mail finally, I went down to the Taylor Post Office, got my mail, and for a couple weeks so far, I said, they're not moving it, I'm just gonna go buy one, so I went and bought one. He put it out, he went and got the mail the very next day, and they had like dropped something on me.
And they hit it.
Just, I just couldn't resist.
Your husband mentioned that to me when I was out there about the mail, and I talked to him about that. They thought it was mine at first, I said, well, it doesn't matter whose it is, you broke it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, we, that, we'll hold them accountable for putting, you know, the mailboxes back up. When it's all said and done, everything better be right. We, we, we have the last sign-off on that, so if there's damage, I would say that to any resident along that route, because they're going Tyler, up Cogswell, Wick, and going all the way out to the connector, um, just west of Ining. So anything through that process, we're, we're, you know, holding them accountable. Uh, there's some other jurisdictions that come into play with that, they're gonna be boring under the railroad tracks. Uh, so again, anything that comes close to our lines, um, we, we, you know, we're gonna hold them accountable. Roberto's done a great job, there were a couple, um, water and sewer leads that, uh, he made them go back and do work over, that we don't wanna, once they leave, have issues with our residents, so, because it's our system there. This is a water line, this is not a sewer line. I've had a lot of people ask, even though they're large lines, uh, so I hope a couple of those try to answer, and I'll try to connect with you with our interim chief, if you can help us on the other.
And you know where to find me? Well, I know that one day I came home and they hit up the trench that I knew my car went down the cross. I parked in the middle of Leon's driveway and walked across the street, and I kept asking the guy, how am I supposed to get my driveway, how am I supposed to get my driveway? And they're just kind of like, well, we'll call our supervisor and see what we're gonna do. And I said, that's all right, I'll go call my neighbor who's the mayor.
Yep, and, and we.
He's like, if you could just pull your car a little bit, I said.
We'll get on it, yeah.
I'm a little cautious. Leah, they had, they were already out bulldozing so that I could get into my driveway.
And I didn't know they were gonna do that that day, uh, they, you know, they have their own schedule with their contractor, but I'm sorry for the inconvenience, let us try to work with you and improve it, and if it's not getting better, tell me, please. So, I, I have no problem, we have the, you know, the top here of the person at Great Lakes Water Authority, and I'll tell them, look, actually, we're boroughs, had to put staff work orders on them before, so.
You know, I just started my haul and load, and I was like, I should call two or three times, and finally he ended up, and they actually.
Ended up replacing it for the next year when I bought this.
Okay.
The owner's model.
Okay.
He actually ended up putting a better one, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wildsworth, Mr. Wildsworth's wanted.
If I could just, um, expand on, on the road, uh, my son lives down from the mayor, and he doesn't call the mayor, he calls me. And, uh, he's lost, uh, two mailboxes, they sunk his, his driveway, and he was forced to take his, now his fifth wheel, his pontoon, and his boat up in the north and pay to have it stored, because there's no way you'd get in and out of there at all. And it's a mess, and we hope it gets put back, I mean, there's no yes and buts about it, I mean, it's, uh.
But I realize it's, it's an issue, we're hopefully, well, we.
And.
But, but when, you know, and we, uh, when he sunk our mailbox, and we were moved in three foot, four foot down, and cement, and he's like, I don't want to touch it, we'll just put one up, we'll just bust it here, he's on right at the.
And I keep telling the, um, my son to call the mayor, but he keeps calling me, but, uh, and you asked what we thought about dope or drugs. Obviously, it's a, it's a cancer that, you know, eats at the fiber of our society, and that's my answer to that, okay.
It does, and, and, but like I said, the cavalier attitude.
Very cavalier.
You know, I mean, if he would've said, we're doing everything we can, what can you tell me about it? You know, just see the car, just be the license number, but, yeah, well, yeah, that's what you want with your license.
I've got people that have, I've got people that have told me since I voted not to bring marijuana in this town that, that they're not gonna vote for me again.
Well, we will. I just feel like, sorry, it's always so stupid and wrong, and you have, it works, it's never going to work, so.
Michelle, hold on, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, and I would just like to say, my niece lives a little past Oscar, but before you get to Cogswell, and she's having the same issue, so we definitely need to make sure that we, uh, Roberto, and I know he does a good, great job with staying on him, but a lot of times, they had to actually walk over to Shook to get a ride, to just get out of that area, because they couldn't get out of their driveway, so.
I've been afraid of that, yeah, that's the best. Like I said, I kind of hope that once it's all done and they move out of the yard, we can, what's they can call out?
Yeah, they'll be over there by you, Tina.
I know, right? Right.
To the chair.
Thanks for coming out.
Chair. I may. Stout.
Michelle?
I would just like to say, thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah.
If the residents there would come in or call the mayor or one of the council people to let us know, that contractor's job is to, first of all, when they are going to remove your driveway, they are to, you a warning, uh-huh, they're to come to knock on the door and to let you know, ma'am, tomorrow, we will be removing this so that you will know. Now, that's what they're supposed to be doing, okay? Mailboxes, yes, they should have removed the mailbox and moved it someplace where they were not going to tear it down. Uh, sometimes, um, these, um, uh, contractors will do things and they know better. But if you go back to that contract, it is gonna state everything that they are supposed to do, because you are, and everyone involved in the city are paying the taxes, and you need that respect. I, I just, you know, I just have this thing for contractors, I know what they're supposed to do, and the dust, you should not have any dust, period. There should be a water truck on site at all times, the whole time that they are working out there. And those gravel train trucks, that right there is a lot of money when the police pulls them over and gives them a ticket. Trust me, they do not want to pay that huge ticket. So, um, if the police pulls one over, then it's, the word would spread, and you won't have to worry about them traveling like that, but you have rights. Now, getting back to that drug deal at, um, the Shell Station, as a witness, you did correctly, you stayed in your vehicle, you called, you know, you, you informed the police officer. The only thing that I can say about the officer is, first of all, he was not there, happened, but, yeah, he knows things happen. Maybe he said it in a way that didn't sound too good, but the police are up there a lot, okay? And I've, I've, I've seen them up there. But I guess my concern is, when you call and you don't get a response from anyone, that's my concern. I'm not concerned about that officer that said that, you know, well, it happens all the time. I'm concerned about the communication.
And like I said, I, I mean, if I was informed when I called the sher, or the, yeah, the sheriff, that he was on medical leave, so I was informed of that. And unfortunately, in the interim, my father developed a very serious heart problem, which caused, uh, he did basically, got to live at my parents' house three nights a week, four nights a week, altering off with my sister, we were doing garden, we got my dad to make sure he, they thought he was gonna die. So we were there for support for my mom and to help take care of him. So this kind of got pushed out of my mind until Dad passed his, now, now he's fine, he's, he's doing great, thank you for asking.
But.
Um, but, so it kind of went to the back of my mind.
Please speak in the mic.
But thank you.
I'm so sorry, I was talking.
Uh-uh, that's okay, you were talking to, to me, that's all right.
We were having a conversation.
I know, you know, we've had conversations, you know.
Yeah.
But anyway, thank you, thank you so much, you and your hubby for coming in. I know he knows about these double trains and all that, gravel trains. And, but I would like, uh, for the, um, like to request that the mayor, if somehow we can have a, one of the city inspectors to pop in and out over their own Wick, then that way, that, you know, the residents will feel a little better.
Absolutely, Roberto's on the call, he heard all the comments. I didn't try to put him on the spot because of technology, he could've filled in a lot more detail, but I'll, I'll give him download on it, we'll make sure we take action on Wick. I also will follow up with interim chief on us and make sure he makes contact just for future, so.
Because we don't know, you know, the residents, you know, you guys live there, the mayor is here during the day, so he doesn't really get to witness these things, so, you know, we're grateful for the neighbors down there, the residents who live there and who come in, um, and let us know. But from now on, just call, you know, call up, call your mayor when he comes in at night, hey!
Leah, I, I, did you see the dirty looking?
Oh, no, no, I don't mind it. I talked to your husband, I was taking the garbage out, he told me about the mailbox. Uh, no, it, it, all joking aside, it's, it's a serious matter, we wanna make sure that it, we know there's gonna be disruption, but we wanna lessen that, and, and honestly, what I've heard from you tonight is that it's some of the little things like communication, and how you communicate it, uh, that could've, could've made a lot, um, better improved communication. They do knock some doors, they're not perfect, they, we have instructed them, councilwoman, to do that, and they have done some, but they missed, they missed me on some, because, you know, I, I've been surprised, the day she talked about it, I couldn't get to the house for lunch, 'cause they were grinding up the asphalt. So I didn't know that was gonna happen that day, I found out, um, shortly as I tried to go down Wick, uh, and so we got, you know, we got an update on what they were doing, but apparently that contractor did not, did not knock doors. Uh, Great Lakes Water Authority has been knocking doors when they can to give forewarning, but we're, they're definitely gonna hear about this one as well.
And, and on that note, I'd just like to say, we have to tear down in order to build up, and I'm sorry for your inconvenience.
I know somebody will be out to detail my car, this is all over, so it's all good.
Tell you, it's not even worth washing mine, I can tell you that, it's not, and now with the, the dust control, it's like an oily substance, so maybe that'll help with the rust proofing, I don't know. It's, uh, but it's very sorry for the inconvenience, and, and how, don't, I don't mind you, you know, letting me know what's going on, or holler across the street, or call me here, whatever, we'll do the best we can to, to improve it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I just wanna thank you again, because you had some concerns, valid concerns, and, and not saying, you know, people don't, but just your presentation of your concerns, just the lightheartedness of it, even though we know they're serious. Thank you so much for that, um, just really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Yeah, take care.
Are we done?
Yes. Madam Chair, we do have one, um.
Okay.
Request to speak electronically, and I think I may have worked out.
Okay.
The plugs here, and, uh, let's see, keep my fingers crossed. Uh, we have a request, um, Tony Heimberger. Okay. And Mike's gonna take it from there.
Good evening, this is Tony Heimberger. Through the chair to Ellen, Brad. I would like to know, are we for the November election going to try having some more drop-off boxes, like at each fire station, so all four quarters of the city is covered, so people can actually drop their ballots off beside City Hall? Because the way the post office is working at this time, it's not a good situation. I just wanna make sure that maybe we can get more boxes at the fire stations.
If, if I may, through, through the chair, um, one of the things, and Mr. Heimberger, and thank you, um, for that comment, we have been, um, having that discussion, uh, I know the chief of staff, uh, we've talked about, you know, the potential of having, of placing more drop boxes, you know, throughout the city. One of the concerns that I have, especially with the fire department, and I did have this conversation with Chief Kraus a while back, but it's just where would that be, because, you know, let's just say, uh, we have a drop box located, uh, I guess on Middle Belt there, but what if there's an emergency and they have to, you know, and someone's dropping off a ballot, and then they have an emergency? So that, that's a concern that I have. Um, we are looking at other locations, um, to, you know, to potentially have some other drop boxes, you know, on the other side of town, um, we just, you know, it needs to be on city property, um, I'm concerned about security, um.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's a big thing, you know, because, see here, it, you know, where it's located, it's conveniently ro, located, and where you can just drive up and drop your ballot. Well, see, you know, we have security, we have cameras, and, and so this area is constantly being monitored, and so security is, is a big thing, you know, um, and so if something's way across town, uh, my concern would be security of the ballot box. I mean, we could spend thousands of dollars on, you know, a secure box, and, uh, but still, but we are, um, looking into, to that, Mr. Heimberger, and it is noted, um, and so, you know, as we approach the November election and those things, you know, I will make sure that we notify council and the public concerning that.
No, that was a good question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heimberger.
Were there any more public comments?
If Mr. Heimberger has no more questions or comments, that is the only, uh, that was the last re.
Okay.
Request.
Close that out.
All right, I'm certain. Um, number nine is unfinished business.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Roscoe?
I have a message from our treasurer, Stacy Page, and she would like to thank the council for approving her study session for August tenth, and also she said that she didn't have any other items underneath her report tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
Uh, through the chair.
Ms. Wh, Ms. Wh.
Uh, last week, it was mentioned, it was just mentioned, in regards to, um, postponing council meeting, the council meeting this evening because of the election. I would like to bring that up again, um, only because November the third is an election. That means our clerk, her staff will be up until the wee hours, okay? It's a huge election. That's just a little bit much to put on the clerk's department. And it's nothing wrong with moving the meeting, we can move it to the fifth, which is on a Thursday, and then the next meeting would be on the tenth, and then the twenty-fourth. But my, my, my thing is, it would make it better for all if we moved it so that we could have a meeting on the seventeenth, the tenth, and then the fifth, because our meetings were running Thanksgiving week, which is the twenty-fourth. So that would give even the council a break from, you know, going to the Thanksgiving beat, because that's the twenty-fourth, Thanksgiving is on the twenty-sixth, and some people may want to go away or do whatever. So I would like to get a consensus from, from my colleagues to see if they would want to postpone, well, not postpone and change, uh, from the, uh, first, um, Monday, the second of November, to the fifth, which is a Thursday, then we would return on the tenth, I'm sorry, the ninth, that following Monday, and then have it back to back, you know, just like we're, we're having it now, so that we could up the twenty-fourth, we would be free of the Thanksgiving, um, holiday. But mainly because it would give the clerk's office a little bit of a, you know, a little time. This is going to be a major election, huge.
So I'm looking at the calendar, and, uh.
Uh, that Monday is the second, November second, the day before the election, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and so you're proposing, um, the ninth, the, you're proposing the ninth is. What are you proposing, can I get?
The fifth.
The fifth?
The fifth, which is that, of that Thursday, so we could have it in the same week.
Gotcha.
And then, then we would have.
Of, um, the ninth.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm confused now, you got me confused. First, second, and third.
I got it.
Okay, the fifth, the ninth, and the sixteenth, I think.
Mr. Wildsworth?
I believe on the fifth of November, they will be certifying the election between county now and now.
Is that correct?
Who's D, Thursday?
It was, it's changed, Wayne County, I mean, that night, uh, at, of the election, will be taking the results and everything down, so I wouldn't have anything to do, um, with that, on that Thursday, as far as canvassing or anything. So, um, the, the only thing is the packet that Thursday, so if the election is Tuesday, um, you, I, I only have like twenty-four hours to get a packet together for Thursday, just FYI. So unless it's a light agenda, it, you know, it's doable.
Ms. Ms. Abdo?
You're proposing the fifth and the ninth, I mean, do we really have business four days? I mean, that's like a meeting four days apart, I'm just wondering.
Through the chair, it doesn't really matter, we have to have three meetings a month. And, um, if, if we give the clerk permission, let her figure it out in the mayor's office. because the mayor does have a lot of things that, you know, he wants to bring to council. But I was just thinking, if we, we don't have one on the twenty-third, so, anything twenty-third and above, they can work that out, but they do need permission from the council.
How about this, Madam Chairman, if we with, I'll work with the clerk's office and your input, we've got some time for November, we'll try to look at what works best for the schedule, I know that Steve Hitchcock had had communication with our clerk, and some communities do indeed, um, not have their meeting, um, I think he was okay if you were to take action on that. Um, but I'll, I'll coordinate with her, come back, there'll be some kind of recommendation.
Okay.
And then that gives you a chance to give some feedback and look into it.
Okay.
Uh, I can tell you the other, uh, factor out there that we just don't know is the governor's orders. I mean, a lot of tonight's confusion, guys, is that they changed the order to ten people last minute after this meeting was already a go for public. So, we had to scramble to make this happen and, uh, have people come in and out, and thank you to Chief Allison for helping us with that and the rest of the team, and, uh, there were some hiccups with us, uh, being able to hear from the group on the call, they could hear us, obviously, but we couldn't. So, we don't know what other governor orders, or as the numbers change, uh, we're just adjusting, uh, to those orders, and we want to adhere to them, so, that, I think that gives us some time, Councilwoman Webb, to look at it, and we'll determine what the orders are, how we can adhere to it, what works best for the election, 'cause I agree, it's a very important election, and we'll try to come back, uh, with some kind of recommendation.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
If I can, Madam Chair, I just wanna say thank you for the consideration, um, you know, just preparing and, um, especially with our electronic meetings and things, so, um, it, it, it would help. Would help, uh, you know, with that, just, and, and again, um, you know, working with the mayor's, uh, you know, the, the mayor and, and our city attorney, um, and at least, as the mayor mentioned, we'll have enough time to, to, to get that out there, and so, we can notify the public as well.
Teamwork makes it a dream work.
Thank you. If there's no more unfinished business, uh, number ten is new business.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Wisworth?
Good, Mayor Allen, Bining, Bining Road, I see all the barrels up and down. Is that road falling apart, or who's, who's repairing it as much?
So, so that was a Tifa project where we had to do some, uh, joint repair, or it would've been falling apart, so it was preventative. Uh, that's a high interest for development, so, we're trying to protect the investment that we have there, and they should be wrapping up shortly.
Tifa funds, all right, fine, thank you.
Communication?
I just wanna do, I know I did the chairperson, I'm not trying to be selfish, um, but just, um, talking about the elections, you know, um, just that it's a lot going on with the COVID-nineteen, and just, just to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Ellen was saying, you know, just the, the civility, just, let's just be kind to each other, let's represent well as a city, um, let's be patient, let's be respectful, and let's be responsible, and let's be safe. Um, this is unprecedented in times, and, um, it just, we all should just take ownership of that, to just be kind and try and work together and live as peaceably as we can during these times, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, if there's no more communications?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams?
And talking about, talking about the election, you know, we say be kind, and I appreciate Councilwoman, uh, Tally, but we first and foremost have to make sure we pray. And we have to pray, and we have to mean what we pray. Regardless of what we want in our hearts, it's not for us, it's not for us. And you can't, you can't be angry, and you can't be vengeful, because something don't work our way. We're not kids anymore, we're adults, and we have to, uh, learn how to accept things, whether they're for us or against us. We, we, we have to learn how to accept that, and prayer works when nothing else will, prayer does. And so, we have to, you know, we, we talk about it all the time, it's seriously time to be about it, it really is. Because the younger generation is watching us, and we say all the time what they shouldn't do, like the young lady, uh, and I don't know how old those folks was that was at the, uh, gas station, but we can't tell the younger generation that stands behind us to do the right thing when they don't see us doing the right thing. We need to be that example, you know, they put us here to do the right thing, and, and I'm not saying nobody up here is doing anything wrong, I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying, you know, it's so easy to say be nice, and then it's a whole nother job to actually do it. So, I say, the first and foremost thing that we need to do is make sure we keep prayer in our hearts, and in our minds, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any other communication?
Number twelve is adjourned.
I'm old.
Support. I did.
Okay. It's been voted by Ms.
Wisworth, supported by Ms. Roskel, for the German of this meeting, Mr. Wisworth, Ms., Ms. Roskel?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Chair.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned.